I apologize for my tardiness, tardiness. My daughter was in a tournament tonight. So is this the settlement agreement, I guess, with Rickles?
Ninety-two fifty, yeah, that's what we're talking about.
And just make sure, because I heard a lot of things, is it he's gonna continue to get paid, I guess, what, through 2026 and not have to show up for work?
That was supposed to be negotiated, from what I understand.
Basically, we have someone getting public funds, not showing up to work. All of this would have been avoided if you only had affirmed my decision. You guys make it difficult.
Let me make a statement about that. If you had done what you're supposed to do, like it's supposed to been done, this would never have happened in the first place. This belongs to you, Mr. Mayor. If you want to debate that, I will debate it with you.
I can remove him?
I know what the statute says. The statute says that you can fire the fire chief for any good reason, and at the next council meeting, you have to announce it to the council, which you did not do.
Which it was announced, you provided with the press release.
There was no resolution, and we didn't vote on it. Why are you so big on us voting the place chief out?
You guys chose not to do anything on it.
And it also says you cannot fire the fire chief permanently, and you made a statement that Chief Rickles was never gonna come back to work, because you fired him permanently.
This is your problem, so I'll let you guys figure that out.
Yeah, it's our problem now, but it was caused by you and the Personnel Board.
So me and the Personnel Board, so now it's the Personnel Board's fault now?
You fired him. The Personnel Board upheld your firing.
Yeah.
That's the reason we put Chief Bennett in the place that he's in.
Mm-hmm. If the Personnel Board actually affirmed his termination, then you would think that the council would have actually affirmed the termination as well. But that's not the hearing there. Again, like I said, this is...
You're a hundred percent wrong. If anybody wants to know the truth about it, I will gladly meet them and tell them what the facts are. And yes, the Personnel Board was right. You have the right to fire, you have the right to fire him for any good reason. You thought it was a good reason, you had the right to fire him. That part was right. The wrong part is, at the next council meeting, you have to announce it. By law, you did not do that, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You're wrong a hundred percent on everything else.
So when you tried to introduce the resolution to bring him back, Council Brian, I specifically remember it was tabled. So why didn't the council basically bring him back then? Like I said, this is a problem that has been created by the council, and I'm gonna let you guys figure it out.
It was created by you, and we have to try to take care of it.
Mm-hmm. So now that he's, that they're gonna bring him back, I think we owe it to the department to give some direction as to how things are supposed to operate. Since you guys have created this two-headed monster, I think you probably need to...
I'm so sick of you saying "you guys." You started it, okay? We didn't know he was fired until the next day, when we saw it on the news.
So...
And that was because of you.
You need to give the Fire Department some direction as to how they're to operate. And for the record, it says, "The citizens of Tarrant should not have to live in fear of a racist and misogynistic public official that is tasked with, in this case, saving their lives and the lives of their children." So take that for what it's worth. Okay, so he has a no-show job. Okay, Chair, we'll entertain a motion concerning Resolution ninety, ninety-two fifty.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to introduce Resolution ninety-two fifty, Resolution reinstated. Jason Rickles to Fire Chief of the City of Tarrant Fire Department and directed all back pay and benefits pursuant to the Personnel Board of Jefferson County ordered dated November the second, seventh, twenty twenty-four. I move with adoption of Resolution ninety-two fifty.
Sir.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any unreadiness? Again, all this could have been avoided if the council had done what they were supposed to do when he was initially fired, when he was initially terminated, and also when the Personnel Board first sent it back. They sent it back because the council had requested. They wanted to vote on affirming or not affirming the, his termination. And so again, because they chose not to do anything, this is what you get, so... That's all I have to say. Is there any more unreadiness? Seeing none here, none. Madam Chair, can we please have a vote?
Council Brian?
Yes.
Council Thredford?
Mr. Stein.
Council Anderson?
Yes.
Council Freeman?
Yes.
Council Matthews?
Yes.
Motion carries. One, this is a resolution authorizing the City of Tarrant to renew its membership into the National League of Cities. I think that, given our financial situation that we're in, I think that this would be a waste of money, because the only person that goes to any events hosted by the National League of Cities is Counselor Freeman.
I fail to understand if you wanna keep your foot on people's neck for education. That's on you, just because you don't wanna learn. That's the problem. You don't want to learn, and you don't want the people to learn to better the city. There are grants out there that the city is entitled to, but we haven't applied for them. We have not applied for anything. And you got all this money that's out there that the city could use, but for some reason, the mayor is not trying to push it. But you don't want me to learn, or anybody else for that matter, to learn to try to get some grant money in here. Stop making it personal, Mayor. You should be leading by example, and I don't see you leading us nowhere. You ain't led us nowhere. The only regret I can say I did was when I went around and told people to vote for you. That was the biggest mistake, and I went back and told them I made a mistake. I was wrong, and I apologize. What have you done for the city? Except get all these freaking lawsuits, and you got the people thinking that it's the council's fault. No, it's not. No, it's not. And you quick to go and say something that you cannot back up. When you made that statement about we had something to do with a video got released, you not realize that slander? That slander? You oughta be tired of getting these lawsuits. You know, and like I said, things that I said about you, why don't you sue me for slander? Sue me. You quick to tell people, "Sue me, sue me, so sue me." What's that?
Your judgment, Ruth.
My judgment, what?
Never mind.
No, it's like this, see, you can sit there and say, but like, it's gonna all, we all don't come out in the watch, we'll come out in the rent.
You know, every time I come up there, I get ahead of it. I do wanna ask you, Mayor, what do you have against Ms. Freeman going to these councils when you can't tell the citizens of Tarrant where the money has gone?
First of all, I don't control the money.
Wait a minute.
I haven't, I haven't touched checks. I haven't signed a check for three, for almost three years. And as far as Ms. Freeman going on these trips, the reason why I take an issue with it is because she has actually spent more money in the three years, well, four years that she's been on this council. She has spent more money traveling than the prior, all five prior council members from the last term plus the mayor, so...
I wanna know.
And I don't, I don't go on trips, because between, you know, raising kids and my job and my business, I don't have time to travel like that.
Ms. Freeman asked for the original receipts of things that has been spent in Tarrant. Have you received those receipts?
No, ma'am. The reason why I have submitted it since 2021, I have documentation to prove it. But the city clerk stated it takes six months from the last time I submitted, six weeks from the last time I submitted it. She submitted, she emailed me and made the statement that due to the fact that the mayor would not release her, the information for her to be able to get what I need, but he can get it, and he know what I'm talking about. He can get what he needs, so no, I have not received it.
Do any council members have any knowledge where the money has gone? Do you all know? The citizens of Tarrant don't even know. Ms. Freeman, Ms. Thredford, you said that you was gonna do it at forensic audit? Have that been done?
We have not reached out.
The reason why I'm here today, because I'm tired of Tarrant being a junkyard. You go down through these alleys, you go on the streets. Nothing has been done in five years that you all been seen here. Nothing. We don't even have a good street to ride down. I ride around town all the time, go through the alleys. If you called to see could they pick up the trash, we can't get an answer. Why? Where is the money? I'm still asking, where is the money? Tell me, somebody.
All I can tell you is, I signed, I'm on the check...
I'm not talking about no checks you don't sign. I'm talking about...
There's invoices with, I mean, there's backup of HHS checks that I signed.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the checks that y'all signed. Do you know what they for?
Yes, there's invoices.
You know what they for?
Yes.
Do you question why?
Sometimes.
Some of them. Where is the money?
Can I explain?
I'm still asking.
Mayor Newton, I have a question.
He can tell you about where you came from. You spent eight thousand five hundred dollars for Halloween candy, and you talking about her going to learn something? You, you, you giving me a headache.
The entire event cost eighty-five hundred dollars.
Yes, it was.
Eight thousand dollars on candy. Probably spent about thirty-five hundred, thirty-eight hundred dollars on candy.
No, no, no. I was here when you voted. So where is it? Why can't they get the receipts? Why can't the citizens of Tarrant know where their money is going? It's not on the streets. The streets, I'm tired of driving down Tarrant, and you got hoes. Buildings not being torn down, houses not being torn down. Mayor, you ain't even got to listen if you don't want to, but I'm gonna tell you. You are sorry, Mayor. You haven't done nothing for Tarrant City, but they bring us down. But you can do what you wanna do. So you can go ahead and play on your phone, but you got to go. You are leaving that seat, and that's all I got to say for y'all. But y'all need to know where the money going. The citizens have a right to know. Where is the money? Y'all gonna let him be in control? That's all I have to say for y'all.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, Mayor, I'm...
No, I got the question to ask the Mayor.
I just wanna say, just for the record, I was on checks back in 2021. They took me off the check, so I, I don't sign checks.
So you putting this on the council again?
I'm putting it on the council, because the council is taking over all the money, so...
Rickles.
We haven't taken over all the money, we got signed checks.
So if there's any misappropriation, any money that was spent on something that had no business spending, then that's Council Anderson and Council Thredford, because they signed off on the checks.
Where is the money?
We don't sign up for anything that doesn't have an invoice. Since everyone makes invoices for us to sign.
We don't sign up for anything that doesn't have an invoice. I know Chief Bennett has dug into some things for me when I asked you about, I think it was some of the...
But could I ask y'all something?
The drug testing stuff, yeah. I don't, I don't just willingly sign. I will ask questions.
Where is the infrastructure money? Do y'all know where that is?
We don't, we don't sign checks off of that.
Where, what did y'all do with it?
I suggested...
Nobody have an answer for that? Mayor, you got an answer for that?
They just, they rolled it over into the general fund. That was done...
Do y'all know he rolled it over?
I didn't roll it over. They introduced the resolution, and they voted on it.
But the thing is...
Did y'all vote on that trace?
We voted on it because we didn't wanna lose.
Well, when you gonna do the audit?
I'll have to give Mr. Ronald one...
You made the statement in city council that you was gonna do an audit. And I've been looking, waiting and waiting and waiting to see when it's gonna be done.
We'll need to find somebody.
Because the citizens of Tarrant is tired. We are tired.
We had mentioned something about doing something about infrastructure and repairing the road.
When?
No, we talked about it.
You talked about it, but you can't move, don't you?
No, but the thing was, let me tell you what happened, in my opinion. I can't prove, because I don't know, he don't tell me nothing. Well, to my understanding, he said that they used it for paying for those vehicles that the City of Tarrant was leasing. Yeah, you remember? Yeah, you said that. Did he say, you remember? He said something about paying for those vehicles that we were leasing.
Say that again, Ms. Freeman.
I said, to my understanding, the vehicle that was leasing, is they paid off? Now, Mayor, is they paid off in full or are we still leasing them?
Is they paid off?
You know, don't, don't try to pay boo-boo the fool. I'm talking about the, I'm talking about, we was leasing something from...
We was?
So were we? Were we leasing something from the Enterprise?
You voted on it.
But did you, is they paid off, are we still leasing?
You talking about the police?
Yeah, I'm asking if they paid off in full.
Do you understand what a lease is?
Do you understand my question, Mayor?
I wanna know.
The question is, you know what? You wanna avoid something.
I was not involved in that.
Hold on, hold on.
No, 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 this...
This is my question.
The police cars.
He wasn't involved.
He wasn't involved with that. I just wanted to ask him.
We talked about it, I thought it was a good idea, I'm not...
And we got in the cars, all but one of them.
When we get the car, we're...
But every time we asked him for something, he said that Lisa Baker, and the accountant, was working on giving us the documentation.
Only thing I want to know from the council and the mayor, where is the money?
I don't know.
That's all I wanna know. Where is it? Where is it?
Well, I've been removed from all my...
Heck, got your own tone. Where is the money?
Well, I guess we need an accounting of it.
It's Baker, fine, test it.
I said the accountant needs to give us an accounting of what's in the account.
When that gonna be? Where can I get that? Because that's a citizen of Tarrant, which I've been talking to around this town. Nobody knows nothing.
When we, but Ms. Williams, when we asked the Mayor, he said to us that he was waiting on to get some documentation from Lisa Baker and the accountant concerning that money. Now, I can go pull it, you know, I can go look through my notes to see what they said. They still look, they still?
No, because I don't remember saying that.
Where is the COVID money?
You know, I was saying that.
So nobody know. Nobody know where the money is. Don't you think it's time for you, Tracy, to get this audit going? I am dead serious.
Where are we on our audits?
We need to know.
Twenty-two, twenty-two.
And that's all I gotta say at this moment.
Here, can you discuss Resolution ninety-two fifty-three concerning public nuisance at twenty-two oh five Evergreen Street?
Evergreen Street, we had a complaint that someone had set up transient housing. There was a tent there.
Let me, let me tell you about this. I called the police. I went to church Sunday, that Sunday. There was nothing there. When I got back at twelve-thirty, it was a full tent, he had chopped wood to keep warm. He had a vicious dog running around, all around in my yard and everything else, and I couldn't sleep all night long. He started cursing. I don't know what his mental status was, but he called his mother. She said they were from Pensen, and I understand they were not. They were from Fulton Dam. So I told her, "I don't care if he can't stay with you, but women height is not the place to bring him, especially not next to me." I own three lots up there. He at first moved it closer over on Matthew, and then he moved it back that way again, and he was out of order. He was raring his voice up. He was frightening, and I didn't sleep all night long. I called the police.
Thank you, my friend.
Yes, Chief Bennett, thank you, and all those who came with you, thank you. He responded immediately like he should have, and he's always responded when we call him. This is not pedicopunction. This is not gunsmoke. You're not gonna pitch no tent and nasty dogs and everything, wherever you come from, take it to Fulton Dam. Don't bring that to our neighborhood, because we black. That is over. You ain't gonna stay next to me, filthy nasty. You build a house if you wanna stay there, and make sure it's your property when you do. Because when you come across my three houses, if you put it anywhere close to me, I'm calling. And if I can't get any satisfaction, I'm going on live news. I'm going governor, I'm going all the way to Washington DC, and I already got somebody on the case right now. So let me tell you right now, running over people, rights is not right. It just can't stand. We don't have no tent laying here. He might even go where they lay them at, and nobody says anything. I don't care what they do, but I don't want it in my house. I don't want to be frightened. I was up all night, and I told, told them when they came, "I've been up all night," because I didn't know whether he was gonna knock the door down or anything. I said, "My son called from work, he said, 'Mama, is he gone?'" I said, "No, not yet. I did have my friend, my pistol, and I do know how to shoot it."
Thank you, Sister Deacon.
So I, when we called, we want y'all to respond, and thank you so much. If there's anybody who came with you.
Readiness, this is a resolution removing Chief Wendell Major from the Office of Chief of Police for the City of Tarrant. Whereas following the findings of an April 2024 independent investigation into the Office of the City of, to the Office of the Chief of Police of the City of Tarrant, which revealed multiple areas of serious misconduct on the part of Chief Wendell Major, the City Council of the City of Tarrant has continual decline to remove Chief Major from office. Whereas since that April 2024 report, said misconduct has continued and/or escalated, exposing law enforcement officers, the citizens, and the City of Tarrant to serious harm. And whereas this ongoing misconduct includes continual closing of law enforcement cases, preventing and/or obstructing active investigations, including cases which involve domestic and/or gun violence, retaliation and violation of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, allowing unauthorized personnel unsupervised access to sensitive and confidential areas of the public safety building, including former employees who were terminated from misconduct, hiring personnel outside the rules, policies, and procedures as outlined by the Jefferson County Personnel Board, and approving contract services and/or expenditures without prior authorization. I have a feeling I know how this is gonna go, so we're gonna put this on, still put this on the next agenda as a new item.
You got a motion that's been seconded, we have to vote on it.
Yeah, I know, we're gonna vote on it, but I'm telling the city clerk, we're gonna put it on the, okay.
And that's gonna be another thing we'll talk about, too.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Council Brian? We're voting?
No, we're not voting. We're, we're having our discussion now.
Okay, you're having your discussion.
We're having our discussion, okay. Mr. Mayor, Alabama law says that you can fire police chief for any good reason. Obviously, you have a good reason that you think. All right, I want you to put your big man pants on. Bear as a police chief, fire him. If you're gonna fire, fire.
As you know...
Don't ask these ladies to, these ladies with skirts on to do a man's job. If you wanna fire, fire.
As you know, there's a current case before the Alabama Supreme Court that was a lower case that said that you are the appointing authority and that you can fire him, that I don't have the authority to do that. So that's why I've been including this, so you can do your job.
You're saying that you agree that you do not have the authority to fire him, right?
At this point.
Okay, all right, all right. Chief Major?
Yes, sir.
I would like for you to present your reasoning as to why you shouldn't be fired. Now, let me say this. The mayor's reading there is not supported and is without merit. First of all, it is the police chief's job, if I'm not mistaken, and you correct me if I am, that when he reads the report, if it needs to be changed in some way to make it better, whatever, whatever, that's your job to do it. Is that not right?
Yes, sir.
That is correct, okay? Is it not true that one of the individuals that had filed a complaint against you for sexual harassment has withdrawn that complaint?
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
Yes, sir, okay. Can you give, can you give other reasons why you should not be fired?
I believe I've been performing the job as you expected. I told you when I took the job, I would enforce the law without fear or favor. I do not care about personal money. That's not my goal here. My job has been, since I've taken the job of a law enforcement officer, that I would uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Alabama, and I would enforce its laws without fear or favor. I do not care about personal grandstanding. You can say what you want about me, but we will enforce the law. We will supervise the officers that I am charged with responsibility of supervising, that they follow the law, and we will do that no matter who, no matter what, and no matter when.
Okay. Madam Clerk, can we please have a vote?
Council Brian?
No.
Council Thredford?
No.
Council Anderson?
No.
Council Freeman?
No.
Council Matthews?
No.
Okay. Motion fails.
The question I have for the council is, on Sloan Avenue, we have that alley where they are coming in on that alley, where the house that they, they are shooting in, that alley, is there any way that we can pass an order to block that alley off? Ma'am, you don't live on that side of town. I didn't interrupt when you was talking. Please, please have respect for me. The reason why I ask, because that's the school zone. That's where the kids walk. And they coming through the alley. If you watch the video, they, they come through the alley, and when they come through the alley, they come to the house to shoot. So that alley there is the shooting zone for everything that happened on Sloan.
If you give me the address, I'll, I'll send it to the county and...
I'm asking, again, to the body, is there any way that we can block that alley off? Because it's hard for them to escape a one-way alley.
So tomorrow, when you...
Can you come here, Chief Bennett, county? Can you explain to us about blocking off any county that affects the fire department? And we are considering. Because if tomorrow this will affect you all, that would be something to consider.
No, go ahead, Chief.
I just had a couple of statements about blocking off alleys. I totally understand and sympathize with you about everything that's going on with the shootings. If we block off alleys, it's gonna slow or impede the fire departments, the fire department vehicles, and the police departments into the area. With only one way in and one way out, there, it does put our equipment at more risk getting in there to help you and your neighbors and other folks. When they laid out the design of how the roads run, that's why a lot of those buildings, when the city was built, have garages in the rear that access the alley to get out. You know, you block the alley off, you have to have a certain amount of flow for traffic from those vehicles to get in and out as well from anybody who still has a garage that they would store a vehicle in or something. But it would definitely impede emergency flow and emergency access to any of the houses and structures, because we, we commonly, depending on where the fire is on a house, we can use the alley for access for, for fire.
With that being said, the alley that's coming, connects to the alley going to the school is blocked off. It is blocked off. Go straight down that alley, and if you go to the school, you can't go through the school through that alley, because they blocked it off.
Which alley is that is blocked off?
Right there by Sloan, between Sloan, coming off of Warrenton Sloan, the school, straight down the school zone.
I don't travel that alley.
So that alley is blocked off, so that I find to be untrue. But my thing is, we had a baby. That girl was in that house last night, and she's, she's six months pregnant. Again, you had kids in that house when that shooting went through. I wasn't even gonna say nothing, but then I had to go pray about it. But I, I, I'm saying this to say that it's not gonna stop. This is second weekend on Sloan. And if you look at the shells, how many shells down there? This ain't just no nine-millimeter, no thirty-eight. This ain't, this ain't, this ain't that type of thing. This is artillery going into that, to this house.
Do y'all see the people going in that house? I mean, do you know where it's coming from?
They take, everybody took cover. They take, everybody took cover, everybody took cover, but, but these people were sleeping in the house when these, these individuals came and shot this house up, them individuals were asleep. So, so I've asked, it's her zone, so I've asked her to go and, and, and talk to those people, but those people, kids not even go to school today. Because.
What's the address?
Is that where that house?
Uh, yeah, that's, so, so I have the address.
Is that the same house?
Chief Major, do you have the address for that home?
Chief didn't come, but, uh, Sergeant Curry did, so I, I've never seen Chief over there.
Is that that same pretty house?
It's on February the second, that there was a prior incident, I think January thirty-first, same location, they called us back, later since they discovered more damage to the property.
I've been there.
We do not have an identified suspect at this time.
Do we have an address?
We had a, we do have an address.
Can I get that address?
Yes, ma'am, I just don't know.
Okay, that's fine, if you'll call me tomorrow with that address.
Yes, ma'am.
That's down from the school. Um, okay.
So, so my second question, that is a school zone, if you look in the school, the school wall, you will see a bullet hole in the school wall from, across from the house. They didn't discover, it took two other people to discover, with myself. So I'm asking, we, we put up the, 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 the shot spot of the, can we put some cameras up, where these kids walking, these school zones and, and, and in that school zone?
That was on my.
Uh, addressed, that's already been worked on.
Thank you.
I, I'm talking to the council chief, I, I.
Well, he was telling us now.
But, but I, I, I need an answer from the council on record.
Well, yes, do, what were you saying, Chief Major?
Yes, ma'am, we've already addressed, we've, four, uh, four cameras have gone up in the last.
In that area?
Uh, uh, I think two additional cameras are going there, we have to work around based on the calls. That area is on the, in on list to put the cameras up as the equipment comes in and as they get the ability to install them. They'll, they'll go up there. We have had, as, as I said, one of our rating cameras, what he calls shot spotter, in that area that gave us the signal, we responded to, and that's one of the incidents.
They did respond, I, I say that, but the problem is, the problem is, with, with, with the thing, we're having on Sloan, they thinking they just come on Sloan and shoot and get, and, and, and when they come, they, they, they fly. And then when we got Tarrant behind them, but kids in the road that's attacked, I mean, that's, that's.
That's not a day or they shooting, are they shooting the kids or getting out of school?
Man, they are shooting at any time, at any time in the weekend, they feel as though when, they deliver Tarrant to one call, they go, they come over and they, like I said once before, they criminal, they know what to do, they know when to, to lure who's in.
It's right.
And, 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 and that's the only thing I'm here for, but like I said, when I come in here, I talk about the kid, but at the end of the day, we need something done on Tarrant, I mean, on Sloan, because this, 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 this is getting outrageous. Every weekend, boom, 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 everybody taking cover. Now, now it's close to my house.
Back in two thousand and seven, so Sloan's been popular a while.